We are live at LA City Council. Woo, it's morning. So there's something going on here today though, because this guy, right? He doesn't just show up. This is USC's top lobbyist, Rick Caruso's right-hand guy. And he is our alternate suspect for the leak of the LA Fed tapes. He knew about the meeting seemingly before it happened. He is powerful enough to orchestrate a cover-up and to falsely blame two people. And Kevin DeLeone is actually suing them. So Kevin DeLeone's lawsuit will survive his departure from the LA City Council. But a lot of people from the LA Fed here today, that's your Los Angeles County Federation of Labor, AFLCIO, that is the most powerful labor union in Los Angeles. And sometimes when the bosses do things, it's not always clear why. But Kevin DeLeone is actually suing two people. She's suing the guy everybody seems, he's suing the guy everybody seems to think is behind the biggest political crime in Los Angeles, along with his wife. So some fascinating politics going on here today. And we're gonna hide in the back and just watch what happens because I'm not sure that I was spotted coming in the room. And then I'm not sure if Kevin DeLeone is actually gonna show up today or not. In which case, this is gonna be a golden opportunity. There we go. So watch his face right now. So he is not enjoying this song because he in fact does not want Kevin DeLeone to go home. But this is our guy, this is Sam Garrison, USC's Senior Vice President, Rick Caruso, Chief of Staff at USC, and former Caruso-affiliated VP. And if you don't know Rick Caruso, he is just about the most powerful man in Los Angeles. So this is this guy, the cops are gonna shut down Adam from singing the song. But you could see that he was wincing that he did not appreciate the music. But this is our guy. And I think he did it for political advantage. This is our LA Times reporter. This is David Zahnus of the LA Times here, doing his job in the City Council Chamber, reporting on City Hall. And whether or not you believe, right, the story that's been created that these two people are behind the biggest political crime in Los Angeles, kind of depends on if you believe the newspaper or not. And a lot of people increasingly don't believe the news coverage they read in Los Angeles sometimes because it has been politicized. The owner of the LA Times is actually being sued in two states, both in Delaware and California, over inflated drug prices. So we're gonna have fun today here. I lost a battery pack on Wednesday, in case anybody wants to send some fun today. I gotta get a new battery pack going. But I do have a spare. It's just old, very old. But kind of like, the politics of Los Angeles are just beyond dirty and messy. And figuring out who is who sometimes is not so easy. It is corrupt. And this question of who does what sometimes is not so easily figured out. Now, actually, I have some news I'm working on. So the Attorney General of the State of California, Rob Bonta, he is actually apparently incredibly close to the President of the Labor Union here. And he's also simultaneously negotiating with City Council over the district lines. And so actually, I have a report that he attended an event at the Labor Union, and at the same time, he's negotiating with Council to redraw the district lines. And that is actually an ongoing investigation. So if you don't like LA politics, if you just want Scientology today, eh, but we are doing a lot of fun things here at City Hall. I don't see Kevin DeLeone here yet. But this is Kevin DeLeone's last day on City Council. I guess we're gonna do it as well next week? And the person the Labor Union has accused vehemently denies being responsible. But the problem is kind of that he is disliked enough that people credibly believe that he might have committed this high political crime against Los Angeles in leaking these illegal recordings, which created months of turmoil here. It continues to kind of frame the dialogue around politics in Los Angeles. And the mystery is who leaked the tapes? Was it Sam Garrison over here? Or was it Santos León? And you can see, he's just sitting there. So I wanna see if he talks to Kevin DeLeone, because that'll be a beautiful moment. But Kevin isn't here. So maybe Kevin is gonna ditch out on his last day. The USC marching band is here, they were in the hallway. And we are voting on something for UCLA's Labor Center. I see Kevin DeLeone staffer. Yeah, I mean, and that's actually the accusation, is that Kevin DeLeone is engaging in a fraudulent lawsuit against these two people to save his reputation, because everybody hates him for being a racist. But the person with the most to gain really from disrupting the major selection here in 2022 was Rick Caruso. And this is his top political operative here today, and I haven't seen him here since. What are we doing now? We're doing something. And the interesting part is, this note that was leaked on Reddit, the account name is HonestFinding1581, is incredibly political. And it supports Rick Caruso, and it also talks about three people at the LA Fed. But apparently Santos didn't have beef with all of those people. In fact, one of them, he was quite friendly with. So it's not really credible that he would name them in a note, right? That's gonna get scrutinized by the press. And it raises this question, right, of is this a political operation, right? Was this an attempt to depose Nury Martinez, retaliate against Kevin DeLeone for refusing to endorse Rick Caruso, and try to take down the democratic establishment of the city in favor of Caruso? And if you don't know, of course, Caruso is one of the biggest funders of the Los Angeles Police Foundation. In fact, he's the former chairman of the police here. And all the cops here love him from Rick Caruso. So here's USC's other lobbyist, and here's the marching band coming in, right? So we're talking about the LA Fed tapes. And these are recordings that contain an extremely inflammatory conversation between the former president of the council, Nury Martinez, Kevin DeLeone, former Councilman Gil Sadio, and then Ron Herrera, the former LA Fed. So you have the USC marching band. Alright, so you can see, right? City Council loving this. I think Marquis just threw up a sign.
So ladies and gentlemen, one more time for the University of California Marching Band, in honor of our own President and Americans called the Constitution. Now we have a video that we'll hear some figures of the council have to that.
So it's Friday here, which means we're not doing any actual business.
We're not gonna have any more disruptions. I want to issue a broad warning to a number of people who are going in this moment or otherwise being disruptive, which will be followed by a second warning and dismissal from this meeting.
I don't see Kevin DeLeone.
My grandfather first immigrated to this country over a hundred years ago. So from that begin, then, growing up with my dad, I was passionate about Los Angeles, really cared about this city very deeply, and commented every time I drove down the Harvard Freeway, pointing at City Hall and saying, "Look at my City Hall." Welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall. A budget is much more than expression, it's really an expression of a value. In its best form, it's an expression of values of the people in Los Angeles. I didn't ask to be the budget chair, and it wasn't necessarily the job that I most wanted to do with the council, because
You see Karen Bass there, right? Defeated Rick Caruso.
We're facing over a billion-dollar deficit for this year. We erased that billion-dollar deficit. This is the most important truth that we have, because everything that we do as a city is touched by our budget. We're making substantial investments in things. Welcome to the very first Department Services Navigation Center in the city of Los
Oh yeah, we love Krikorian. So what's really fascinating, right, is in these recordings, and this is something I've repeatedly highlighted on my Substack, there's this section where Garrison talks with Santos León before the meeting, oh sorry, with Kevin DeLeone before the meeting. And he talks about USC scandals, the genital gynecology scandal, sexual abuse, and then a political scandal we hear in Los Angeles, the Mark Ridley-Thomas scandal. And Kevin DeLeone says that USC's strategy is, we're dealing with this, is just keep it going, just keep it going, just keep it going, it has legs, to paraphrase it. And Nury Martinez does not like the idea of Kevin DeLeone talking with Sam. And it's because Sam is a longtime City Hall president, and he's Caruso's guy. He worked here at City Council for a council member named Martin Ludlow, who got in a lot of trouble because he misused union workers' funds for his election campaign to the council. And then Garrison worked for Ludlow, and so the note displays particular animosity towards Martin Ludlow and towards the legendary labor leader Miguel Contreras, who led the LA Fed. But it certainly seems that Santos León might not be the only person who could have done this, that Sam Garrison, you certainly would have the capability to. But the dominant theory, right, that the media has embraced, is that this guy is guilty of this crime. But his wife, right, she's guilty too, except anybody you actually talked to that, because she was incredibly loyal. The story they came up with is that the reason Santos León essentially bugged the Los Angeles County Federation of Labor is because he was jealous of his boss, and that he was crazy enough and angry enough to do this and then to leak these recordings before the election, which resulted in months, months of uproar here, because everybody was convinced, right, the City Council was racist. And this kind of played to political advantage. But I wanna see if Kevin DeLeone shows up today. I don't think he's going to. I think he might hide. But it's a little crazy that Kevin thinks suing is gonna somehow get him out of the scandal. In fact, he's been voted off of the City Council. And he's gonna be dealing with this lawsuit that he's filed through at least next June, and likely until at least July. His chances of recovering major money from these people are incredibly low, they're not particularly well-to-do, you know? And Who doesn't love City Councilmen? Alright, so this is what we're talking about, right? Districting of City Council, districts, and there's only 15 in Los Angeles. And so the city has begun a reform process that could take years. And they said it was actually at the center of USC, USC's participation, when this happened in 2020. And there was a big fight over who would represent USC between Marquis Harris-Dawson, the council president, and Kern Price, who currently represents it. The question you heard discussed on these Fed tapes is, you know, USC is a political asset, the Eighth District of Marquis represents, which is South LA, does not have political and economic assets, and wouldn't it be great if Kern Price took it away from them? So that's what they talk about. If you've never heard of these, you're being done a grave disservice as far as your news. The LA Times actually won Pulitzer Prizes for covering the aftermath of this scandal. It was the Story of the Year, essentially. But the idea that, you know, people can manipulate the justice system in ways that, you know, potentially subvert, you know, the City Council, you know, not to mention race relations in the city of Los Angeles, is kind of disturbing. And actually, I attempted to report Sam, because I thought it was gonna be, I thought he was gonna do something to influence the election, and particularly, I thought it was gonna be an audiotape scandal weeks before this happened. You can hear the mix of boos and cheering from Marquis Harris-Dawson. So you can see how tense things are still there today. And this is over the tapes, right? So this is what we're talking about. This is what everybody else in Los Angeles is discussing. Alright, so Here we go. So this is what this is about, right? Like, what is Zach talking about, I heard, right? Like, what are the LA Fed tapes? This is what this is about, right? So LAPD is now gonna object, these folks were disrupting the meeting. And you can see Garrison is up here looking around there. That's our guy. I don't think he's recognized me. I actually know him. And here we go, here's LAPD. Oh, it's totally on today. If you're not watching this, you are missing out. So everybody who spent their time badmouthing me, making up shit, this is why I matter, because this is called journalism. Alright, so it's on. I didn't get it, okay, alright, now we're having a fight. See, so this is what happens when you have a city that's divided over race relations. And what's going on here today? I can't tell somebody what he's doing, I mean, why he's doing it. It's called divisionism. Alright, so we're going into recess. That's how far we made it today. This guy's on the ground here. Alright, so council just went into recess. They're continuing to fight with this guy. And this gentleman is now being arrested. Alright, and I lost Garrison. They're clearing the VIPs, there he goes. So there goes Sam Garrison, he's out. He's going into the VIP area, back with the City Council members. And this is where we're at. And this is why I think it's important to get to the bottom of who leaked these tapes, so that people know what has actually happened here. But again, this is probably the third or fourth incident of violence that we've had related to this at City Council. Alright, now they're gonna eject Wayne Spindler. And the folks from the LA Fed have gone into the back, including Sam Garrison. And here's where we're at. He's being arrested. I don't, I don't know that man's name. Welcome to LA. So this just went down, everybody who's been going, what is Zach talking about, these LA Fed tapes? This is what this is leading to, because people are convinced that the city government is racist, that the police are racist, and that the solution here is chaos and disorder. Except the problem is, we still don't know exactly who created this scandal, who leaked these recordings, and what it means. But everybody is just inferring their own meanings. And Spindler is being ejected. Spindler's out. I would like to go monitor that, but I also don't wanna leave the chamber. So Spindler is out. Looks like everything is pretty cool. I This is why we go to City Council. So this is what people in Los Angeles care about. This is the real people, this is the real story, is this massive scandal, right, about racism and what it means. Alright, so we got folks banging on the door. Hit the like button, let other people see what's happening here at City Council. So two people have been removed, one is under arrest. The one under arrest was taken into the back that way. And this is, this is the day to be your audit. So we got one of our accused potential leakers of the LA Fed tapes, USC Sam Garrison here. And this is the divisionism that it creates. Okay, so now the VIPs are coming out. Again, so here is Yvonne Wheeler, the President of the LA County Federation of Labor, who leads the organization that this is all about, because of the illegal wiretapping. So she's coming back out. And then I don't see Garrison from USC. I just see staffers. And it's going down today. So like, this is political corruption, political scandal in Los Angeles. This is policing, this is racism, this is raw power politics. Sister Paeza is praying for the city as she should. And, you know, if you haven't read some of my other coverage, right, you would not know how heated this has become, particularly between the Latino community and the African-American community. They are convinced that essentially, the racism in the city is directed against them. African-Americans, because of the racist conversation on the LA Fed tapes, Latinos because they believe that their political power is being taken away. Kevin DeLeone, Gil Sadio, former President Nury Martinez, LAPD. So one under arrest, one removed, Wayne Spindler has been removed. And Rob Quan is still here. I think Stacy's still, no, Stacy's still here. There goes LAPD's gonna talk to Rob Quan. And the crazy part is, I've been pressing LAPD to reopen their investigation into the source of these tapes, they won't actually answer, right? Despite the fact that their investigation was inconclusive, if they will continue to investigate who leaked these recordings? And who has created, right, this tense situation in which people believe, right, that the City Council is racist, the government is, you know, racist, the police are racist, and a lot of that is true, but, you know, the handoff here from Krikorian to Marquis Harris-Dawson, the final day for Kevin DeLeone, but Kevin is not here, you know, is where this tension really comes out. And, you know, it has gotten physically combative here today. You know, police officer, you know, assaulted, you know, at least as they say. And a man has been arrested, and now Wayne Spindler has been ejected from the meeting. Mr. Spindler is one of our regular City Hall speakers. You know, I think he kind of felt like, you know, everything gets worked up and everybody else gets worked up. But Krikorian is coming back out now, taking his seat. I don't see Sam Garrison back in here yet. But the VIPs, right, they went into the back, actually, where the City Councils go. So the LA Fed president is over there, Yvonne Wheeler. I don't see Garrison. But I think Garrison leaked the tapes. I think this guy they're accusing Santos León, he is I think this guy they're accusing Santos Leon, he is innocent. I was emailing his attorneys last night, because I got some more information that I'm working on publishing. And the story just kind of moved ahead here. So Marquis is talking over there. And this is where we're at. This is USC's lobbyist. Actually, no, this is my friend. Hey, this is really tense. I mean, I'm trying to figure out what's going on, David, you know? He just shook his hands at me. If L A P D had the case, right? You know, the fact they couldn't come up with a single piece of corroborating evidence beyond an I P address is really inadequate. So the fact that L A P D won't continue to investigate to resolve this, even as this reshapes L A city politics, and leads to this is really ridiculous. But I don't quite believe the story that this guy did this. I think David's boss, Sam, did. Yeah, you know, a lot of people thought I was crazy for suggesting that this guy might not be guilty of doing this. But the outcome here, right, is incredible tension in the city of Los Angeles. And like, the crazy part is, I think a lot of this was just, I think it was to help Caruso win the election. I don't think it had anything to do with the internal workplace of the L A Fed. I thought Caruso was desperate to win. And even though he spent $100 million, couldn't defeat Karen Bass. All right, so Karen Price has a USC basketball. And USC, of course, is very powerful, has a very active lobbying operation, and he just threw Krikorian the basketball to give Krikorian a farewell present, because today is Krikorian's last day as well. Kevin De Leon, he didn't show up. I guess he maybe thought that hiding in the back was his solution, or wherever he is. So this is what they're going to talk about. They're going to talk about the Fed tapes. By trying times, she means the Fed tapes leak, because it created chaos here. There were hundreds, if not thousands, of people upset here at city hall over what they heard on those recordings, which was a racist discussion between city council members and a union president. There's Tracy Park. This is the door slamming. But it's kind of the question, do corrupt people behave in corrupt ways? Or is there no corruption in the city? I saw Tracy the other day at Dee Hockman swearing in, and she wouldn't answer me if she missed Kevin De Leon or not. Her spokes guy walked her away and was like, no, talk to him. Hugo's here, Katie's here, Marquise, Bloomingfeld, no Kevin De Leon, he said his last day, Paul Krikorian, Eunice Hernandez. Yes, you have. So. Yeah, Kevin didn't show up today. This is his last day. He is not here. Maybe I should have confronted him in the pews the other day, but this is going to go to trial, so I kind of wanted to protect my own ability to continue to investigate by not getting into confrontation with Kevin De Leon. And more people are talking, particularly about what happened at the L A Fed and kind of like what the environment was there like. I should talk to a guy before I went on camera here. And certainly the woman they're accusing Carla Vasquez does not seem to be responsible for the leak of these tapes. They have questions about her husband, but nothing conclusive. And he never said anything political, but the note is super political. So Imelda replaced Nury, right, after the tapes leaked. She won the special election. And this is where we're at. Shout out to L A, who's been coming down to city hall, tussling with Imelda. I don't see Sam Garrison in the chamber anymore. I'm not sure if he's in the back still. I think he might be in the back. His wingman has returned to the chamber. But I don't know. Did somebody powerful do it, or was it the little guy? It's a whodunit. Who doesn't love a whodunit? I see Kevin De Leon staffer member. And here's Adrina Zarian, who's going to take over for Krikorian, actually, behind him is the guy. So what she's talking about, right, is the tapes, you know, burn it down. The city was, you know, getting really, really tense. These folks are leaving. All right, so I think this is all L A Fed staff leaving. Yep. Here comes the president of the L A County Federation of Labor, here with the bag and gown. This is Yvonne Wheeler, the president of the L A County Federation of Labor, which has been at the center of the scandal that people are upset about. And the L A Fed has made really clear its desire to extricate itself from the scandal. So she's out. So very interesting. Garrison's here, Yvonne Wheeler is here. And this question, right, of like, can you rig an investigation against somebody? You know, is really what's going to be at the heart of this civil trial, this set for June. And I actually published the full papers from that on my Substack. You can find them in part 118, and I'll probably repost them here, just because I think a lot of people haven't read those. But there's been essentially no other news coverage of this, despite this being the biggest story in L A political history, frankly. I think Garrison was just here for that USC bit. I don't know if I can find Kevin De Leon. But I suspect that maybe Kevin is in the back. They actually have more rows blocked up than usual today. I should have photographed Wheeler, but I have a screenshot. Let me, I think it's going to happen here. Let's go try to hallway. Let's go see what's happening in the hallway. All the big ones are here today. Hey, this is the beauty of an audio leak scandal, man. You divide and you conquer, and provoking people in a racial way works. Sam Garrison from USC was here today. Yvonne Wheeler was here. And what I'm hearing is that Rob Bonta, the attorney general, and Yvonne Wheeler are actually quite close friends. And then, of course, Caruso is very good friends with Gavin Newsom. So this question of, right, who leaked these tapes, just keeps getting more fascinating, because they are all, in fact, friends, and, you know, they all show up. I don't know why the L A Fed was here today. I mean, there was the USC thing, but I think, you know, this question of could these people, right, be framing, you know, these two individuals, Santos, and then nobody seems to think Carla did it. Carla is innocent, but Santos, Leon, they still have questions about him, but the evidence is so inconclusive, you know, that, of course, the city attorney didn't charge him, and neither did the district attorney. So who leaked the recordings? Who wrote that note on Reddit, you know, the Honest Finding 1581 note? And who tried to influence essentially the outcome of our election in 2022 and remake city government in a way that Nury Martinez is no longer here? I think Nury would have enjoyed this today. She should have shown up! If Nury Martinez showed up to city council, that would be a story.
Yeah, she could have saw all the little cockies getting all wild up there.
Yeah. And they arrested that other guy. Do you know who he was?
One of the actors.
One of the actors? Yeah, I saw them tackle him.
They're like a pot someone.
I'll have to ask L A P D for a statement.
Yeah, because you heard a pot.
Yeah. I didn't see the actual, like, initial melee, just the takedown.
Yeah, well, they were told to walk.
Yeah. Let me go see if I can catch anybody lurking in the halls here, because showing there is kind of just hanging out. Got an alarm going on out here. Yeah, we need to know the guy they arrested. So here's Wheeler. This is the president of the L A Fed, actually. Somebody else. Kevin De Leon did not show up to city council today. You actually can't get to their offices. And his office will never respond. Man, nobody over here. Let's go back to council. Got the nice real Christmas tree. We're going back in. More people from the labor union. There's their back exit. And then there's actually an internal exit that they can use to get out of the V I P area. But you can see the X here on Kevin De Leon's face with the stickers. People are not happy with him. Here's Heather Hutt, Karen Price. All right, so it's presentation day. All right, he's getting a Dodgers jersey.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and members. Wow, this is awesome. By the way, USC does not put names on the back of its jersey, because it's, you know, it's the, what's on the front of the jersey that matters, not what's on the back. So, and that applies for us too, which makes me a little bit uncomfortable about all of this, and I will say this. Thank you. Well, I knew about all of this, because I got to tell you, after, I've literally been an elected official now for 21 years, in my capacity, and maybe for the first time in that 21 years, I'm almost speechless by all of this. So, thank you. But only almost speechless, not quite speechless. And it's been an incredible journey that this has been for me. I'm so, it's so appropriate that we're also recognizing Jackie Goldberg today for her life experience as well. Is Jackie good? Oh, yeah, there she is.
Yeah.
So I'm so delighted that you're here today, because for those of you who don't know, 31 years ago, I started a democratic club called Democrats for the Better Action. And the very first thing that we did at the club was help collect Jackie Goldberg to this spot, it was in 1992. And so, and it was actually through that campaign that I met my consultant, Eric Kocian, and who else, you know, the group of us went on to create a whole new way of empowering the Armenian community and underserved communities in our area and bringing them into the electoral process. All of that was because of the work that we started with a great leader and a great council member at the time, a great school board member, somebody with courage and moral clarity, like Jackie, who has been a great mentor as well. So, gentlemen, congratulations to you for your life and service as well. So thank you to Channel 35 for that awesome video. It was great. You can squeeze 15 years into a brief video, but they did an awesome job of doing that and, and I'm glad, because it was, it's good for all of us to look back and remember. And, you know, as the reason why I became council president, I put all the pictures of the prior councils out there and the prior council presidents, is because we, as members, have to always remember what came before, what the context of the work that we do is, and no division, be those that follow us. So when I started here, under Mayor Peter Igoza, I should say alongside here, Peter Igoza, this city, as Mr. Bloomingfield talked about, was in, it was in a mess financially. We were facing a billion dollar deficit, we were furloughing employees, you know, it was the middle of the worst financial crisis that the city had ever seen since the Great Depression. And then, you know, we worked our way through that. And then things were getting better than COVID did and the great economic calamity that came with that. We were hit with all sorts of, you know, social division and the kind of, you know, conflict and anger that we even witnessed a little of this morning. And then we welcomed six brave new members into the, into the council.
He's going to stand in the back. He's gonna stand in the back.
Through all of that, I'm really proud that this council has turned the page for this city from really difficult times to very promising times now. So I'm proud of all of the work that you've all done. And I'm really excited to watch your future as a civilian watching and cheering you on from out there. So I just want to take a minute to thank all the, a few of the people who've been responsible for that incredible turning of the page and the incredible progress that we've seen. Starting with, you know, the tens of thousands of employees of this city in every department who wake up every morning without enough resources, without enough help, without enough material, and somehow they manage to make our city better each and every day and work to try to serve our constituents without the resources that they need. So I'm incredibly grateful for all of them, everybody who works for the city in every department and for their managers who try to guide them through. This council couldn't function without the many people who sit around this horseshoe, behind the horseshoe, who don't get recognized. But we know how vitally important, we know how vitally important they are. The staff at the CLA, the CAO clerk, the city attorney, much sergeants, everybody who makes this room work. I'm grateful not only to you for the work that I did as president, but, you know, for helping even the baby member when I first came in here, figure out the rules and make things work. So, so thank you. And of course, our personal staff, every one of us who sits in this chamber on the horseshoe knows that we get the plaudits, but our staffs are the ones doing the work and doing hard work and facing, you know, sometimes really difficult challenges, figuring them out against all odds. So, so all of us, I think, always creating a gratitude for our staff, full curiously called, and our districts. And if you will excuse my bias, I think the greatest of all of those teams ever is the CD2 staff, current and former, who are here today. And so to all of you, I just, I can't tell you how grateful I am and how grateful I feel for all of your work and your leadership. And I'm just blessed to have three amazing chiefs of staff leading those teams. Starting with your future colleague, Adrian Mazarian, who helped, you know, guided my path for the state legislature here. And he will be joining me soon, followed by Orina Brenosian, who joined me when he was 17 years old, going to knocking on doors and registering voters before he was old enough to vote himself. And then moving through that up through leading Mayor Theodore Iago's campaign and taking over some chief. And then, my longtime friend and lieutenant, who has, you know, helped, I think, every single person here. My current, for the moment, for a couple more days, my current chief of staff.
That, I guess, Jean Guerrero of the LA Times.
When he became my chief of staff.
Alright, so Corian is getting his kudos here. It's a big day at City Hall, this is transition of power. I guess Isabel Herado is gonna get sworn in next week?
He had to lead us through the times that he did. But he always did it with grace and with generosity in helping.
So Corian is the now past president and this is his last day. And then Marquez is taking over.
And I'm especially grateful to my family and my wife tomorrow and my daughter Lori are here with us today. We all know how much our families have to give up to allow us to do this work. And so some of you who are new, got a crash course in that, knowing how much time this takes away from loved ones, from your family, from thinking you would rather be doing personally. Well, you know, my wife has dealt with that now for about a quarter of a century. And through difficult campaigns, through difficult days where, you know, we see the sort of thing that we saw today that's harder for families.
KDL did not show up today.
And I'm, I'm just, I can never express enough gratitude.
Maybe he'll come out later, but I don't think he's coming.
For what they've sacrificed to allow me to do this work and the incredible support that they've given me to make me the man that I am and to make this possible for me. So thank you, I like it. Members, you all know that I love this institution a lot. And I've been so privileged to serve with 30-some council members, three mayors, and especially all of you. This has been just the most, the greatest honor I've ever, imagine having. I'm gonna let it go, I'm gonna let it go. Believe it or not, I'm gonna let it go. But it's been truly, it has been such an honor to call all of you, my friends, my colleagues. We, you know, we've disagreed, every one of you has disagreed with me on something. And if you didn't, you wouldn't be doing your job and neither would I. And so as I leave here, none of you needs my advice. You're all, you know, you've all been elected because of your skills and judgment. You don't need the advice from me. But the one thing I, one thought I would give to you is that it's okay. It's okay when we have disagreements. It's okay when we, you know, debate one another. Just remember that we're all doing that on behalf of what we think is best for our constituents and for this city and be cohesive about it. And if we do that, this, you know, institution will continue to advance forward and take our speed up. If you've been, if I speak on my tour, I told you before about Lindbergh Beacon. So forgive me if business repetitive for some of you. A hundred years ago, this building was being planned to be open. The leadership of Los Angeles was providing a part of it to come out. And through part of the parades, the festivities leading up to the opening. And Lindbergh, who was at that time, you know, he honored every place in the country. You said, you know, enough already, I don't need, you know, to be honored personally. If you want to honor me, just do something good for pilots. Do something that will be helpful for pilots and so they could be with the beacon on this very cynical city hall. And I feel that way right now because I, you know, keep having these things where people are sending me off. And it means the world to me and thank you all very much. I think it really does. But honestly, what matters to me most is what you all do going forward in this building and how you can continue to make our city better and make the city proud and continue the transition that we've started, the process of reform. Continue that, continue to make this city a better place than it was when you started. And just know that you have precious few minutes to get that done. Because you may think that it's gonna be a long time, but I can tell you from where I'm sitting right now, it goes really fast. So continue to do the great work you've done and make this city proud of you. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve and thank you very much for allowing me to be here.
Alright, there we go. Everybody's gonna stand and applause here. Corian, Corian is done. Kevin DeLeón could not show up for his last day. Don't know where Kevin is. He was here the other day, he was hanging out in the pews, talking with people. But you won't see him around here no more. Somehow, I don't think KDL would have gotten a send-off like that. Tracy's getting a hug over there. Curran's gonna get a hug. Carlos is getting hugs. Monica Rodriguez is gonna get a hug. Hugo Soto Martinez is gonna get handshake. Katie Arce obviously is gonna get a hug.
Alright, thank you so much, everybody.
And he's going back to his seat. Still no signs of Kevin DeLeón today. I wonder if they're like burning files up in Kevin DeLeón's office or something? So Hugo's up, he's got a presentation. Today is presentation day, they no longer work on Fridays at City Council. It is pure presentation. I think we had one motion earlier. But if you want to come see the horse and pony show here at City Council, Friday is your day. If you didn't know, earlier in this week, City Council approved $950,000 in salary payments for Kevin DeLeón's staff on his way out of office. But he couldn't come for his last day, nobody is honoring him. Hugo's over here. He goes all smiles. And this is what we're doing. It is a dog and pony show. It's a, yeah, horse and pony, dog and pony. It's that kind of day. I had two calls on the way down here. I'm trying to get to the bottom of who hired the private security for the district attorneys swearing in. And then we're continuing to probe USC-related matters. If you haven't checked out the LA Public Press, their reporter just left. Okay, so it's Jackie Goldberg Day. Oh, he's got the dick. This is the city. Kind of funny. A fedora and grow an epic stash, clearly.
She was there getting arrested to make sure they won that contract demand, which they eventually did.
Alright, so look at that. Want to talk about activism? Look at that. Student activism. Holy shit, that's wrong, no, is that? No. Is Kevin gonna come out? There's more people back there. I saw Kevin staffer earlier, but nobody else seems to be here. I don't see her here anymore either. So maybe we'll go up to the fourth floor. If I go to the fourth floor, I kind of lose reception, which is where the City Council members' offices are, guarded by an LEPD officer. Sometimes you can catch people coming and going to their appointments there. So Hugo's a populist.
I don't know if they're gonna do a public comment.
I don't know if they're gonna do a public comment. More people coming out. I see Adrian Mazarian. There's more people in the back there. I have not seen Kevin DeLeón today, though. I don't know how many presentations there are gonna be today. And if they're gonna do a public comment or not, but. I can move up one more. Karen Bass. Here's the mayor. Earlier, Rick Caruso ran against Karen Bass to become mayor. And the leak arguably benefited Rick Caruso. He got a small boost, the police union's longtime opponent, Nury Martinez, who put it out of office. After the scandal, Kevin DeLeón stayed. Gil Sadio had lost Eunice Hernandez and was lame ducked out. And so the question is, right, like, were these tapes leaked to ultimately deserve a Karen Bass, you know, as mayor? And, I mean, Caruso spent $100 million trying to be the mayor.
And say, what do we do? Instead of saying, oh, okay, let's make you get the, get all this job back, we had this incredible conversation, I remember, who said, no, let's change this city. And so what we came up with was a whole series of policies. They put a pension ordinance, which did help Jackie Goldberg get her job back. We, like, helped the whole city. The Living Wage Ordinance, Equal Breakfast Ordinance. Uh, there's a series of policies that we got started.
Check out this guy. This is Bass's LAPD detail. This is the uh special security services. You know the LAPD. So, see the scan there? This is a very serious cop. See the badge there? So Jackie Goldberg is a former state assembly member, District 45, from 2000 to 2006? And then she was on the school board. So that's why they're honoring her. I think she must be retiring or something. Or they're just like doing a presentation for her, but there's the mayor. So, well, politics happening here.
So I am so honored to be here in recognition of today. Uh, and in recognition of all the problems that people are dealing with every day. How many more just more progressive, more humane? More uh
I don't know when they're gonna swear on Isabel Herado. I thought maybe it'll be today, but maybe it'll be on Tuesday. I don't think they're recessing yet for the year, but I'm not totally sure. I think they have one more week of City Council meetings before they're gonna go on a long winter recess. So there goes the mayor. Mayor gonna get a hug. And... This is one of the mayor's aides coming and talking to her. She's gonna do the honors here. Kind of see her there. Okay, so Miguel Contreras, legendary labor leader, LAFED. And Contreras is actually talked about in the note, right? Because there were allegations of financial improprieties at the LAFED. So you can get an idea how long-lived and insular LA politics are uh just by watching some of this. And he actually died real hard. Alright, so there goes Mayor Bass. For Jackie Goldberg Day. And the mayor's gonna dip out. This is their honorary. Alright, we got one more on this. So eventually everybody's gonna stand here. It's kind of the idea. The mayor is out. Alright. Corrigan's got a bag of fried over Doritos for everybody. How about that? San Fernando Valley, like Studio City area. Kind of like the southeast part of the valley. And again, a lot of this gets back to district lines and how you get elected, which is people vote for you. But if you only have to campaign to people once, right, instead of having to do it twice, it's very advantageous. So say Attorney General Robbanta is actually negotiating with um City Council in closed-door sessions over a settlement about the LAFED tapes. Um, potentially they're gonna redraw city lines before 2026. I kind of don't think that's gonna happen, but I also kind of don't trust uh Robbanta either. Alright, three LAPD just came out. I think we're just rotating. I think we're gonna go to the hall. I'm gonna go send them to the back. Two into the hall, one sitting in the chambers. We're still on presentations. Kevin DeLeone did not show up today. Um, I haven't seen Nithya Raman either. Emelda Padilla is here, Tracy Park is here, Karen Price is here. I think he was in court. Maybe Karen Price has left for court. Um, facing some felony corruption charges over his wife primarily. Katie Arslavski is here, Marquis Harrison. Fulmer Fod was here earlier. Corrigan is here. It's his last day. Unis Hernandez is here. Heather Hutt is here. McCosker is here. John Lee is here as well. John Lee is actually suing the Ethics Commission over the last City Hall scandal here, Operation Casino Loyal. Because he got a trip to Vegas, he was in Las Vegas, and so he's filing a lawsuit um over them investigating him, like when he was a sap- his separate roots are. I could be wrong on that. I don't know where this story is going. Some people are actually listening to this. Rob Quan is over there talking with LAPD. He's got some gum going. I'm not sure who the woman is with the uh dyed hair. Okay, so now the honorary's gonna speak.
You know, this has been a whirlwind week. I had no idea that the Americans would feel difficult. But it had, and I hope Chairman Ritter, my wife, over the last year there. But they were wrong. I've actually enjoyed it. I've enjoyed it because it didn't become just about me. It became about me and all the people who became a part of the movement that A- became. I remember, for example, the part of the fight for living wage. What was it? Was it after name? McLean. Came in one day. Near the end, we weren't ready quite to vote. There's two weeks before we're ready to vote. And he came as the vote to
Uh-oh. The ghost of Christmas past. Actually, he's getting no presents. Kevin DeLeone.
But we finally got the vote. It was quite stunning. And it's a day I frankly will never forget. But the other things that were important to us too, and I always want to remind people, we did some substantial changes. But we also changed Hollywood. We said, become a place where people really avoided that they could get out of it once they're in someplace there. And we did it by talking to the owners of the property who had not run Hollywood. And they created the first, and I can't remember exactly what it was called, but it was a second assessment for them to have their own Hollywood. What, what were they called? Didn't they include a district? And they put their own money in because we, in the 13th district, promised that we would support the things they needed in order to make Hollywood a place people were dying to come to again. And what were those things that needed to happen? We needed to change the housing. We needed to make it a place where people wanted to live. I went out into the community. I remember for sure, uh, I see a couple of establishments every time. And we asked them, oh, for making better for you, so that you would find this a place you wanted to support. That there would be less graffiti. There was well, some of the things that we had in New York were a little unusual. For example, we had to change certain streets to one-way. Because what was happening is, is that the drug dealers would get off on one exit, drive over to the record, buy and sell drugs.
This is Friday's of City Council. It's storytime. It's drug dealer storytime. I, I can think of one-way street in Hollywood. It's called uh Catalina, right? It runs along a certain building. Maybe the drug dealers are there. I assume they're gonna do a public comment at the end. I think on Fridays, that's a new pattern.
So I'm thrilled today to go into Hollywood and see what it's like. But it was the after of so many
What would make you feel better about living in Hollywood? Does anybody want to answer that one?
And I also want to thank this new uh group of people here at the council. You know, these are going to be very difficult.
Alright, so... Emelda. Tracy. Price is go- Price is still here. Ramon is not here. Rodriguez is here. Soto Martinez is at the podium. Yaroslavski is here. Fulmer Fod somewhere in the back, I think. Kevin DeLeone is not here. Corrigan is here. He got a basketball and Doritos. Um, Heather Hutt is here. Unis Hernandez is here. John Lee is here. And Tim McCosker is here. I was not expecting bestiality to come up today. I don't know if I'm gonna be able to stream the whole thing. So actually, I lost my battery pack. And my backup is already dead. So if anybody wants to find the battery pack, this is what we're on. Right now, it's not very good. Bravo, bravo! Alright, here we go. Got to turn it over to brightness. So it is uh now Jackie Goldberg Day. So it is, uh, now Jackie Goldberg Day. Hey, you know, give the old people their respect. She served honorably, unlike certain people around here. And... We'll see if we can make this through. I have to get another battery pack. It is now eleven forty? I got an article to publish today. I gotta finish it still. They used to do stuff on Fridays, actually. No, it's, this is just, uh, presentation day on Fridays. I, I guess Marquis changed the schedule. It was kind of like a coup d'etat, but on the schedule. All right, so all hail Jackie Goldberg. All hail our wonderful elders. Um, if anybody knows anything about her and Scientology that happened here, right?
Thank you, Mr. Soto Martinez and Jackie. Congratulations on this well deserved honor. And, you know, uh, Mayor Bassack, about not having the school.
It's educational, even though it's not entertaining.
Thirty years ago, I came to this school here on the L.A. City Council. I was our former president when you were here with Mike Fernandez, Richard Alletor.
Damn, more people are coming in.
And while I was working with Mike, that I watched some of what you like. And your staff, where I personally, Cheryl Putin, where I watched Sharon Delugic and all of her magic.
So Emra is speaking. Emra, a close friend of Kevin DeLeone. She's gonna be without Kevin now. Cause Kevin is done. This was supposed to be his last day. I guess it was technically Wednesday now, but he did not show up today. I might have to go up and see what's going on at the offices. We tend to lose signal if I go in the elevator.
Whether it was through some of the longstanding institutions that were resistant to change or accepting inspiration, you know, with my father, who was among the first, you know, firefighter.
Oh, you know.
And I lived with, you know, Sharon and what's still getting, uh, that's been involved with. It really is incredible. But I watched you do it here with some of my dear friends and mentors, uh, in partnership. Uh, you know, another incredible, uh, ally and partner that you had is Sharon Ramon. Another Sharon. What is it with the Sharon's?
What is it with the Sharon's?
Right, so Sharon Ramon.
What is it with the Sharon's?
And it's an incredible person with me as well. And so just thank you for all of your years of service and work. And, uh, thank you for your example. I was blessed to, uh, thirty years ago, have a parkour seat. And so thank you for your service.
Oh, we got more presentations going on. We got more people showing up for presentations.
Thank you, Senator President. Thank you, Senator President Rosita Martinez, for bringing in this parkour house for us to be able to celebrate. Celebrate her. Have you proclaimed Jackie Goldberg Day? To celebrate your career, your profound legacy of making this city and this world a better place for everyone. Jackie, you are someone who has led so many firsts. You didn't just walk through the door to City Hall. You kicked them open, so just the.
You just got banged down.
You know, you were a leader and working through speed movement and it's like someone I had earlier. You showed us what courage looks like, standing up, speaking out, and pushing back against injustice, no matter what, and no matter against who. You were brave enough to do it every single time. That spirit has driven you into, you know, being a person who has been a perfect servant for your entire life, with company unified school district classroom, where you shaped young minds for seventeen years. You have been a great educator and even more, an impressive person, breaking barriers in whatever jurisdiction that you represent. In nineteen ninety-three, you made this street right, becoming Los Angeles' first openly LGBT QI+ member, opening the door again for others to walk behind you. You led the charge of the living wage workers, reminding the city that they need to start to pay their fees. That's what everybody. Jackie, one of the greatest gifts, has, one of your greatest gifts has always been your ability to bring the fight for equity home, to make it real, right here in Los Angeles. You know, this talk about it, you do the work of bringing people, people into you, you organize them, to make it a reality. In twenty fifteen, you started working to create our city's first targeted local hire program. I think I know that I'm pretty much the president truly in my shoes in the city, in a brave pathway for civil service careers for individuals who face significant barriers to employment. We want examples. We are most honored by examples. Our transgender folks, foster, uh, foster attacked youth, homeless gang members, homeless people, homeless incarcerated people. Jackie, we opened the door and we opened up for everybody. And today, that program proceeds to uplift our most underserved communities. Jackie, we didn't ask to change, we failed to. In classrooms, in council chambers, in the office departmental, in the streets of Los Angeles. Thank you for your service, thank you for your leadership, and for your decades of dedication to making this world a better and more equitable place.
Oh, no, no.
Senator President. Google, thank you for, for this presentation, Jack the Tech, for coming in. Uh, Matt, and I love the stories, memory lane and Sharon. Thank you so much for your comments. I will say that when I came on this council, I asked for personnel. That was the community I wanted. And I remember exactly when I met you. I was hired by Tim Conde ninety-seven into a position that hadn't been billed or didn't have a classification or something. But for some reason, I had to go to bend my position. My position, my role in the city, the first company manager, the chair of personnel, was Jackie Goldberg. And, you know, obviously, I have a bit of credit. And progress has still been had, our family, even the labor movement. And my brothers, we were meeting, had such a pride in respect for you and such a, such a appreciation for your sense of the whole house of labor. So I walked in knowing a little bit about you. And you probably don't remember this, because you probably did it many times. You took my case. You made me explain who I was and what I did.
Okay, so Kevin Stafford just came out. That's Kevin Stafford over there with the blonde. And she's going in the back, so I don't know if he's gonna come out or not. Oh, he's back there. I think I saw him. Is that him? No. I don't know if Kevin DeLeone is gonna come out. I'm about to go up, uh, and see. At his offices.
I learned a lot from you, and when I chaired personnel today, I did much a lot. And I appreciate the intensity you gave. Thank you for everything you've done.
Acosta's doing his thing. I think Corrón having Doritos is the highlight.
Council member, a senior member, a school board member, community champion, uh, Jackie Goldberg. I just want to add my voice, uh, to the voices of, of thanks, gratitude, and praise for your work, uh, and who you've been to us for all these years. I remember as a, a, a really, really young, uh, angry organizer.
I don't know if we have, we have one more presentation.
And we'd be in community coalition and say, "Okay, you have to go down there and, uh, make your case to the city council members." Obviously, why are you having to do that? No one happens, no one there cares about what's happening in South Central. And we go around and that was mostly what we got, except for, you know, our own representatives. And then we get to Jackie Goldberg's office and we sort of nervously, Solomon Rivera and I, we nervously make our pitch. And you have a real stern look on your face, and in my mind, I would be, here it comes. And every single time, Councilwoman Goldberg would look at me and say, "I don't understand why we're doing this."
These people are... Good job what Jackie said. I think they're just city employees of some type.
Uh, and, and it made me feel like, oh, you could serve in this world.
They have, yeah, like city, city employee badges.
And still be a person that values.
Somebody staffers.
Years later, I get on this council, I can work with you on the welfare and work program, and you are a local hire program. And you didn't even have a formal role. When you said, "We need your help with this," you showed up.
L.A.P.D.'s communicating about something.
And said, "We're gonna dig in." You've been chair of personnel committee for years, so maybe you knew how to work. And I looked this up, as I wanted to be able to tell you to this today. As of last week, two thousand one hundred and ninety-seven Angelinos from low-income communities have sick jobs today because of the target local hire program. And, 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 and Jackie, here's the, here's, here's the bigger and, and more special part to me. Here, I'm gonna reach.
Yeah, exactly.
The districts of this city.
It just goes on forever. It's almost a way. So Marquis is known, he does not like public comment. He doesn't like, you know, the inflammatory commentary. Um, and so he has created this schedule now where on Friday, they do presentations and proclamations, and then public comment is jammed to the very end. So I'm actually, I've lost my battery pack. So the old one is already out of juice. So I don't know if I'm gonna be able to, uh, run all the way through if we do in fact get to public comment today. And what terrible condition so many of the streets are. Think about all the issues, right, that we have in this city. And instead, they have not spent a significant amount of meeting time on this, um, which costs a lot of money, actually. Like, you have to have all the police here. And, you know, you have to have lights on and the building open. Um, I mean, I think the story here today is certainly Kevin DeLeone not showing up. Pretty bothered. Adrien Zarian is gonna have to sit here and do this now. I don't know how much Adrien is actually gonna enjoy some of this. I mean, he was in the state assembly, so he's gotta be pretty used to it, but, all right, she got her plaque. I, I don't know if we have another one after this or if we're gonna go to public comment, but... The other week when they had the police chief nomination, it was ridiculous. It was almost like they were using presentations to avoid, um, having a protest over the police chief. Oh, hell no. I'm gonna go find some Doritos. There was like at least some L.A. political history there, but let's go see what else is going on here. And again, some folks just want to deliver public comment. L.A. Times in. Let's see where the L.A. Times goes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, colleagues. Today for yourself, ladies, on the thirtieth anniversary of the Los Angeles split Croatia.
Oh, it's Croatia. Who doesn't love Croatia? I'm gonna get some water. So, that's who's gonna honor Croatia. Maybe we'll be back to public comment. See what else is going on. Oh, shit, there's more people here. And again, there's a huge Christmas tree here. Somehow, I don't think that's the attraction. If the L.A. Times comes up with a nice, hard-hitting story, um, I'm all ears. It's like city employees. And again, uh, independent journalism in Los Angeles, uh, people don't respect it. They don't respect journalism. Like, how crazy is that? Like, I'm one of the few people here who actually wants to hold, like, the city accountable. Everybody else is just robbing it blind. All that taxpayer money. None of it goes to independent accountability. Yeah, exactly. I'm just, I just got thirsty. I gotta get some water. See, see who else is, uh, just hanging out down here. Got the homeboy cafe. I don't think there are any outlets down here, but I don't have my charger. There's outlets. So if you're ever here, you go down to the second floor and they have a cafe and a drinking fountain. That's better. I'm gonna run as long as I can with as little battery as I have. Come get your picture taken. They're doing the office picture. Let's go up to the fourth floor. Nothing like to, him and Tracy Park actually took a trip to Croatia the other day. Someone's been down. Someone's going down. Elevator going up. Let's go see if, can you also move it out? All right. Scorn, you know, a little bit on his way out. Cause you know how much he got his staff. Scorn, you know, a little bit on his way out. Cause you know how much he got his staffers this week? He's trying to get them nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, uh, payouts. Um, additional salary compensation before he leaves office, but the mayor has to sign up on it.
Yeah.
But, so, you haven't seen him today?
No.
Okay, Kevin DeLeone. So he, he didn't even show up today, and, I mean, they're honoring Jackie Goldberg. She's a nice little old woman. Well, you guys have a good day. Yeah. I, I guess, I guess he has to be out soon though, right? Cause like, I mean, he's only, if he doesn't hold office anymore, he can't be up here, right? Uh, as long as he gets his stuff out.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, cause Harado's gotta move in. Cause they're gonna square her in.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, and like, she's cool. I like Harado. She was fun. It must be like L.A. Fed Christmas party here. Is it like the L.A. Fed Christmas party? It's like the L.A. Fed Christmas celebration?
No.
No? Just hanging out, see y'all? Just hanging out, see y'all? Yeah. They were having like a party or something up there. I don't really like me like standing there with the... People can kinda tell they're getting filmed, right? Let's be sneaky. So there goes the president of the LA Fed. Are we still live? How you doing? Doing good. Oh, it's a Krikorians taking a picture with... No. So, Krikorians taking a picture with Zarian and their staff. I just gotta swing wheel. People get better if I go over here? Alright, we're back. So, man, that thing just gets more sticky.
Well done, but I was so impressed with the activation of the houses from all the different countries in Paris. It was phenomenal. And the span in Paris, obviously, we have, you're talking about a much smaller feedback. It's a different, it's more accessible. And so it's been fascinating to see how we can really, I know everyone's gonna be fighting for relocations, but it really was imaginative about seeing, like, the open invitation for everyone to experience the houses. And it's really special that Croatia has become one of the first houses on this town where we have such a beautiful concentration in San Pedro, and I think it's really going to be special. So I don't know how you're gonna do that in San Pedro, in Italian. I know you all are gonna be fighting for space down there in that little sliver of your district, in the 15th. But congratulations, because it is going to be a really magical activation. I would get to be a home of hundreds of thousands of people that have visited Croatia. It's definitely unbelievable. Because it's just a magically spectacular place from photos, and the people are literally...
So he decided to show up. There he is. Kevin DeLeón.
Being held in the very space where it should be in San Pedro. Congratulations.
Of Croatia, and I'm, on behalf of all of you, we present this to the Los Angeles split connection for celebrating the 30th anniversary of our sister city.
So, it's Kevin's last day here. He's gonna go talk to Monica Rodriquet.
Thank you so much. Alright, we'll transition to our next presentation, to be led by Councilmember Sotomayor.
Dang, another presentation.
Here, I want to celebrate a few Latino voices in literature that made a major impact on my life. Standing behind me are three great authors who have moved me emotionally, inspired me, and one of them named Alas, about reading this book. In many ways, it's hard to put the words, the powerful feelings that come from this dawn out of me, but luckily, the folks behind me are much better with these words than I am. They use their words to shine a light.
So there he is.
To add perspective, to bring beauty colors to our pain and our suffering, and read art that shows us the true spirit of humanity. Personally, as someone who's always enjoyed reading, I've often found it difficult to find stories, whether fiction or nonfiction, spoke to my life experience and the experiences of the Latino community. We know that the Latino community is a very diverse one.
Looks like he shaved at least.
With identities spanning from the Caribbean to South Central, uh, South Central America and North America. These three Latino authors, each in their own unique way of giving voices to the disenfranchised, to immigrants, and to the power-working people here in Los Angeles. Our first speaker today was a writer on the critically acclaimed TV show King the Virgin. Before publicly yours, a hilarious and poignant memoir about his family's life as a document of immigrants from Ecuador. We're reading this book, not only is it very funny, but it really shows someone who came here and struggled with their own life experiences and traversed almost all of Southern California. I think he must have lived in a few parts of our conflictors at some point. So please welcome reading and joining our debate. And thank you for this recognition. Like, so many undocumented students, I discovered the truth of my status while applying shortfalls in high school. I didn't know, my mom always sheltered me from the brutality of being undocumented. And when I asked her why she kept this very important piece of information from me, what she said changed my life forever. She said, "Your dad and I did this to tell you something that makes your world feel different, because dreams should not have borders." I took that lightly in the book, and refused to give a word to these words. But that's it. I wrote the book, Believe Me Yours, as a way to help write undocumented Americans into existence. Not the kind of strategic to see on a night of millions jumping fences invading our nation. I simply wanted to tell the story of my mom and dad, two people who love this country so much that they sacrificed everything for it. Two people who wanted to be medical doctors in South America to work at a car wash and at a pay mark in the United States to give you a shot at a better life. And two people who taught me the hardest truth that this country has to offer, and that's that the American dream is not for you, but for your children. And the work that you do here ensures those children are to pursue those dreams. So thank you so much for this recognition, and thank you for the work that you're doing to protect our innocent American community.
I mean, I didn't think he was gonna... Yeah. I talked to L A P D upstairs, they said he hasn't been moving on his stuff, right, because he's supposed to move in. Alright, let's go to public comment. Oh, yeah, that is true. I thought I recognized it. So, yeah. They're honoring Hector Tobar of Los Angeles Times, and that is Jean Guerrero of Los Angeles Times with them. Or formerly, they gutted the LA Times, and she was actually laid off. But she was one of their columnists, and she was written about Latino politics issues. And of course, Kevin DeLeón is friggin' Mr. Latina Dad. Oh, Gustavo Ariano got mentioned. Gustavo's cool. See, Gustavo wants to know what the fuck is going on, too. Right? Like, with these recordings, like, are these people guilty who they've accused? Or is there some type of, you know, gameplay player to deflect? And in fact, it's kinda, I mean, USC's long gone here, but... I don't know how long he was in the back there. I'm hoping this is the last presentation. Otherwise, we're gonna run out of battery eventually.
I was born and raised in the city of Los Angeles, the South Guatemalan immigrants. Born in East Hollywood on Madison Avenue, across the street from the Public Library. And I came to know Los Angeles as a city of hope and possibility. A city that, where the freeways were still being built, and then stopped by the Mary protests. I came to this building many times, this locus of power and profit-making and justice-making sometimes, as a reporter for the LA Times, and keen to respect many of the people who worked here. Many of them with roots in activism, and having a tremendous amount of respect for the people also who'd be on the other side of this microphone, lining up to make their comments and to give their voice a gauge of better city. And now we live in a time of increasing inequality and injustice in the city. I've seen this as a lifelong resident. I never thought I would live to see the day where we have council beyond House next to million-dollar homes, which describes the situation in my current Los Angeles neighborhood, Mount Washington. So I just want to say thanks again to Councilmen, and I want to say a prayer to all of you who work here, that the gods of wisdom and justice continue to inform your deliberations as you fight to make Los Angeles the city of hope and dreams that was always wanted. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hector. And finally, I'd like to introduce our last incredible author of the day. Jean Guerrero is an award-winning author, former LA Times columnist and current theater columnist. Her first book, Trust, a cross-border one.
It's former because they gutted the Los Angeles Times.
The relationship with her father and her Mexican and Puerto Rican cultural identity. Her most recent book, Hate Monsters, about Donald Trump and Steve Miller and the white nationalist agenda, is particularly important in this moment. When I read this book, I was traveling down, I was courting it, and ran into Ronald Reagan, I was reading. But I saw a Trump protest, and understanding the fruits of white nationalism and the agenda that happens now through her book, I think gave me an inspiration.
There's a fact that we're going to be seeing a precedent of attacks on writers and journalists from different communities, from the communities that Trump is targeting. But I believe that our voices are more important now than ever. I've personally experienced an increase in harassment and threats since Trump was announced. So I just wanna let all of that, the support here is incredibly important. It's work for, for authors who's worth their name in the press. And briefly, I also just wanna recognize my friend, my dear friend Adam Vailen Levinson, an incredible author who left us last week, and it's been hard for me to think about myself. He is somebody who dedicated his life to humanizing the people that we've been talking to here. He wrote a book called The Abu Dhabi Parmit, but that is a beautiful, beautiful book and a testament to love, and faith, and hatred. And that is one of my writing facts, my first book, and my empathy for them. And he's been struggling for a long time. And he was to leave us last week, but I want to make sure that we carry this memory and that it's incredibly important to write down in this moment. Also, that these books are about making us feel left alone and helping us to have more empathy for one another and meeting and sometimes getting to be happy.
Wheeler's in the chamber, right? So, here's the president of the LA Fed, here. And then, here's Kevin DeLeón, so...
I think ultimately, that was the poetry and writing, it was about connecting all of us.
I'm not sure why they're still here. Because like, there's nothing that relates to the LA Fed, unless they're gonna be honored.
Now I'd like to invite everyone here and out in the public to read this book, have a burst through this book, and understand why now more than ever declaring the city, this sanctuary city, was important. Why we need to, why we must continue to fight and build movement here in Los Angeles. Because as the great Toni Morrison once said, "Books are a form of political action. Books are knowledge. Books are reflection. Books change your mind." And now it's my pleasure to present to the debate, Andrew and Jean, each a certificate honoring their contribution to the world of literature, and especially to the stories and cultural problems that exist here in Los Angeles and around the globe. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, fellow Latinos. I want to call now on District 11 for a special presentation.
Damn, we got another presentation?
The Everchild Foundation, which is celebrating their 25th anniversary of the children of Los Angeles.
Can we make this one quick?
The Everchild Foundation is to use children's suffering as an involvement to ease disability, abuse, neglect, or poverty. Through their work, the foundation has helped LA emerge as a showcase for effective education and nations to serve children in need. As the foundation puts it, their work creates a ripple effect within communities and human nations at world wide.
Mel is chatting.
Meow.
Meow for Amelita Pedia.
Joined by some of them today, including the founder and president, Jackson Castor. She's also joined by Cindy Frisling, Sharon Gamm, Michelle Lynch, Cheryl Poller, Nancy Stark, Donna Stedtrich, and Ann Muller. So I wanted to just take a quick moment to recognize those today as the great teachers and champions that they are. So I'll be presenting to them a recognition that their 25th anniversary.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Park, and thank you to the women of the Everchild Foundation, who have done great work all over the city. I know people trying to figure out how to help young people. You're one of the first places that they look and one of the first people to respond with support for those programs from San Pedro to South LA, to MacArthur Park, and all over the Southern California region. So again, thank you so much, and another big round of applause for Everchild Foundation. Alright, let's, of course, city gentlemen, prepare for public comment.
Alright, so we're finally getting to public comment. It has been two and a half hours of presentations here this morning. They had one agenda item? And now they're gonna hear from people. I'm gonna see, is Kevin gonna run away now? Or is he just gonna listen to it? He's just gonna listen to it? Just enough battery for some public comment. Should bring the banana, too. Yeah, it kinda smells. Banana's seen better days, like Mr. DeLeón. Did he run away? Oh yeah, he ran away. So, no, he's standing there. Let's get a good shot. Alright, so today's like Kevin DeLeón's last day. And he has had a really rough run because of the LA Fed tapes, which we were discussing, right? And this question of who leaked them. Can't tell if they're talking about me, or... But maybe they're trying to complain about the police to me? Or complain about me to the police, rather? I don't know. This is where we don't have, um, it would be nice to have like some sort of device here where we could like hear their conversations over there. But again, I haven't done anything. I am a credentialed member of the press, and we just had a speech about, yeah, press freedom. This is kinda why I didn't engage with him the other day, even though I could have, because they will turn it into something. The best he has is I asked him a question. So, Yvonne Wheeler is here. I've got a picture for her, a picture for her.
I will begin the call, the Ron Jason, Juan Lucillo, Lauren Ockham, Mark Logan, Michelle Garfield.
And please, you do not have to speak in any order which your names call, but please wait until you hear your name.
Is he gonna run away? He's gonna run away. There he goes, he's done. He's not gonna listen to public comment. Skipped out. So, Kern Price is over there talking with Yvonne Wheeler. Kevin DeLeón did not remain for public comment. Does he come back out? There's McCosker. Is Kevin DeLeón... Nope. In the back.
I just stated my concern as in general about our roads in the city. Earlier this year, after the rain, I encountered a two hot holes that let me down the rim. Broke my rim, burned my tires, so today I'm still trying to get refunded from that. And rain coming up again, we're going to see that it's imperative that our roads are maintained correctly because if the people who are being taken by this jeopardy on these roads, I don't have enough money to spend to maintain our roads in this city and to make sure that they're drivable. That day that I encountered the hot hole, I could have been regressing on standing in the guard, pet him at night, by myself, four of the cars ended up on the rim as well from the same hot hole. It's unacceptable and I think that there needs to be another process for vision, refund, excuse to, you know, things like that.
So, L.A. does in fact have terrible streets. They only have two items today. So there are two items, one and three. Everything else was presentation.
Heart of the people!
Good afternoon. Which item do you like to speak to?
I am to public comments, please.
So item number two is now a vote for public comment?
I agree, I agree.
Okay, so one item for the item, one item for the general public.
That's about what I need, direct address number three?
Yes.
Thank you. It's about questions. You know, 1993, I was here when Ms. Goldberg walked in this room. I was one of the Republicans, but I was stung by her. I was made by her. I was here when she left. Then a fact later, I believe it was 2001, she was never afraid to hear my words. She allowed me to speak.
Kevin Stafford came back out.
Mr. Corrigan, thank you because you allowed me, you were supposed to do. Why?
Marquise is doing a photo op over there.
...potential to bring the city back. Those of you who have quality goodness in your heart, why are you allowing the crumps in this place? The few who are good at that. All right, this is directed to Mr. City Attorney. Sister Corrie, Sister Ira Cameron, she, all she did was want to read through the Bible and he said she could not. You threw her out of here, sir. Mr. City Attorney, you took away her rights. This makes...
City Attorney, the police are talking.
So, Mr. City Attorney, I have all respect for you, but please don't throw her out again. You have a right to speak. She's a great woman bee. She cares. She loves effort. Transgender person, she didn't give up. She made the best of what she had. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I hope that you respect her when she comes up.
Noelia H. Stevens, Estrella Nett, Jason Figueroa, Mildred Hunt, Regina B., Shonda Strish.
Item number one, item number three. Two minutes for the item, why don't I have to go to the general public?
All right, so he's gonna sing here in Korean for us. Kevin DeLeón popped in, he popped out. It is his final day on Los Angeles City Council. A lot of people are very happy about that. Strangely enough, President of the L.A. Fed is still here. I'm not sure why. I did try to like figure out like what their event is here. They had something going on upstairs and they must have moved out of room. And... We've got one, two, three, four, Marquise is over there somewhere, five, six, seven city council members here for public comment, so not even, you know, eight. Emelda went somewhere, Tracy Park went somewhere, Kern Price is sitting here, counting down his time. Nithya Raman I haven't seen today, Luisa Martinez is here. Monica is sitting in the chair, she's presiding. Jaroslavski went somewhere, she's walked out behind us. Bloombfeld is somewhere, Kevin DeLeón is somewhere. Krikorian is taking pictures in the lobby. Hernandez is here, Hud is here. John Lee was here earlier, but he's gone. Am McCosker is here. This is your Los Angeles City Council, the most dysfunctional government in America that is literally by the day becoming more comical and less relevant to actual government. Monica's smiling. Is Kevin coming back? There's John Lee. I thought I saw Kevin. There's Emelda. Emelda's coming back. If I actually meow at Emelda, I think she's gonna crack up. But everybody meow for Emelda Pedia.
Meow.
Just like that.
Meow.
Let's talk about the, um, let's talk about the order in the city council. So I have a comment for our heavenly Sergeant Duarte. When we have continued those, uh, people keeping the meeting, continuing to having, uh, making notices, not applying the law, not applying the rule, not applying the authority, I want to raise our Sergeant Duarte, so standing on your knees to a freedom. Sergeant Duarte, people like me, we need your help. We are glad you to protect the life and safety for all of us. Use your 24 inches to make sure everybody in the city council can be safe. Everybody in the city room can be protected and that this room can be free from any corrupting child violence. Sergeant Duarte, we need you. Get up, Sergeant Duarte, use your 24 inches!
Hope you're doing okay to get that call tomorrow. Susan Price, Erin Adams, Adam Smith, Amelia Esongi, Jade O'Alana, Noe Munyek, Rob Juan.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm all signed, signed, and I'm not called, but definitely signed. For the social and cultural barriers, there are very few people, blacks, minorities, Asian minorities, white minorities, Indians, have suffered under the size of children's safety. Why? Why do you put these links on our property as the Marquise and CDAs? Are you that much a racist to make us homeless? Is that the policy of new broke? Because I can't withstand for minority people in this country, not letting illegal weapons, not making illegal motherfuckers, and not fucking harmful police. For this here purpose of guilt, of objection, and that's why I'm speaking on the honor of the citizens. Then I have motion number three, but I can't think of the top two. But I definitely know that the city courts, not in declarations, for certified results of anti-trauma pumpkinade. Thank you. As I speak, don't nod. Speak, a grown man, you speak your man, don't nod, pussy. Yeah, that's why I keep on pussy. So, for this reason, in your actions, the Los Angeles Unified School system is saying that every illegal immigrant deserves other Jackie Goldberg or white to education. What about the American children? What about African-American children? What about a fucking West Coast like me that grew up and lived in the United States, motherfucker? Trump! Trump on that! You piece of shit! Now it's like a lot of...
Kevin's back.
What is that, you fuck? I let you, a racist, rich, piece of shit with a moral license, ask you to kick this spinner out for doing nothing for the recess. Put that over there, you piece of shit. You're leaving a poor footprint and the worst thing you hear more of is that fucker who sucks up dick like Los Angeles.
So I don't know about this complaint, but I can tell you that Kevin DeLeón is under investigation by the California Fair Political Practices Commission for his abortive attempt to remain in office, for literally giving his office money to a food nonprofit that put his face on the side of the ban. Kevin is digging this. So Krikorian got like the biggest farewell, but Kevin DeLeón is not going to get any kudos. In fact, we were surprised that he even showed up and sat in his seat today.
You hear my speeches and heard in my words. You hold down, I open my mouth, my tongue not spoken in my mouth. My words shall be of rightness of...
Kevin is gonna go in the back. And he's gonna come back. Tracy Park came back. I think she just forgot her bag.
Susan Price, Del Combs. Paul Corlorius, New York District, constituent. Thank you for your service, you know, of the... Jackie Goldberg, you said you want to still do some good trouble. You can bring it to the table, we need that. We need your expertise. Now that you have some time on your hands, you can put those hands to work and you can grow. You need that. Really, you need that. People are suffering in there and you should make a difference for us. Please come. L.A. can welcome you with open arms. Thank you.
Noelia Munyek, General Public. My name is Noelia and I used to live on Manhattan Boulevard at the 405 in the C11 and C5. I was featured by the mayor's team as an inside tape, that story, this is by my interview online on the mayor's page, however, inside tape was not my, definitely my own. It was last week, once, one day after oral surgery, I tried to go home and found that my lock head machine was out of function. And I was fortunately retrieving any kind of laundry. I was, I'm a prayer worthy and an actually more...
So, it's pretty cool when you shut up. No, nobody is here.
And the only time I had absolutely nothing. Someone gave me a tip, but once I stood up, the cops tried to arrest me and I couldn't place it anywhere under 4118 code, which was basically everywhere. I asked where I could go, the answer was nowhere. I moved to the street and my friends played this game of rotters every time and shuffled up to find your acquaintance without also my friends, but at no point was 4118 ever my friend. I didn't want to be on the street, I wanted to go by river and die. And I'm safe now, but I have 500...
4118 prohibits camping and campments in certain areas of the city. And they have slowly increased the number of areas of the city where you cannot camp. All right, go stay see. Go stay see.
Amelia Esongi, today I will take back.
Has he run away? Where is he? I think he ran away. Goodbye! Ah, nah. Hey, nah, nah. Hey, hey. Goodbye!
Good afternoon, we begin our call of the morning. Virginia Falcon, Steve Mynson, Shoney, Ariana, Sam, William, Luke, Salazar, Nickelai, Charlie.
Afternoon, could you make sure that the clock, um, after that, so which items you would like to speak to? All items, I scan our public comments. Two minutes for the items, one and three, and one general, please, go ahead. Thank you, bro. Item number three is the certification of our election results, and it's just important to remember, who went through two decades without an incumbent city council member being voted out of office? And now we've had at least one voted out in each of the last three cycles. I don't really have that much hope anymore, but I do know there is one thing that you all somewhat remotely accountable, one way of addressing corruption, and that is a competitive election. Either voting you out or steering you to doing a little bit better. So, just wondering, who's next? This week, the fundraising period, over 2026 council candidates, Councilor Lamar's trying to make sure she's not that person, because she's getting out the gate, building up that fortress. Every single odd-numbered district will be on the ballot, and there's nothing personal here, but I think we need strong candidates across the spectrum in every single one of these races. That's why Wednesday on LAX will be supposed to be a Zoom training on how to run rocks in the city of LA. You can register at eip.ly/andre1211. You can continue to start in general, but when I have to use which five number ones, so I've, I've, I've got it all out there, bro. So, I will move to general public comment. I worry about the devil, Delio. He truly appears unwell. I, I am pretty, he, he showers, and he trimmed that facial hair for today. Wednesday, it looked like he put a gel coat on his hand, and he looked like Wayne Spinner. My condolences to the council president, you are losing your best friend on the council, and that is the magic of this place. We've seen people like Gil Sadio and Mitchell Farrell have this lovely romance, and now we have the vintage romance. It's just really cute to see the way that you can all come together. On Kevin's note, he's not done, and that's not just, you know, the idea that he might put a senior advisory job and find a landing place here, but he's not done. He's got an art project. I don't know how many of you have heard about it, gave somebody all heads up, but he's got a thought on an art project in the chamber, and you're all in it too. So, look forward to that coming out. Have a nice weekend.
Good afternoon, we begin our call of the morning. Any speakers that signed up for entrance into public comment, please, and I'll ask them off the line.
Please call my name.
She's putting on my head. Item number one, public comment. One minute for the item, one minute for the general, please, yeah. So, for talking on here, Marquis Sarah Dawson, District A, the lady has said nothing. We have Benny Roberts all voting on 103 in Hoover, on Under the Court, and Avalon, Monica Rodriguez. You took care of your district and getting that baby trash lot at that home clear out. Marquis Sarah Dawson hasn't done shit on Under the Court than Avalon. Trash in this district, creating problems for children and their friends, people in wheelchair who cannot get through. I've been on three months repeatedly and made this an item to be picked up and make it happen, and they are constantly closing my complaints. I have them in my phone. Fuck this city council. Now, I'm going to go to your comment. Fuck the entire race and group at city council, say not even in the poll. Fuck your backs, Sleazy Marquis Dawson, and I D Y Y no way team. If my move out here to fix the whole trash lot situation in our district, why don't you blame our District A, which has a baby trash lot? And appropriately moved pedophile and trash on Avalon's district, and was the woman who shot the girl by 8:47 in her apartment, street payboy, but Marquisy Sleazy resident of the city council. Marquisy Sleazy Dawson, District A, looks like the third program to prepare for District 10 and District 2. Really, my fuck be name for that, or I'm coming here, I'm from my, from my community, with one change, every day, motherfuckers. I'm educated, Nancy, knowing you, your council, you have to suck dick and kiss ass again, but then the polls get weak, salute that motherfucking idiot. I want, I do not have something against that jerk, motherfuckers. Then why, did I not defend the poll? Salute that idiot, fucking fuckball reporter, and his motherfuckers.
I think he'll be back.
I'll be back here, fuck LAX WP and fuck on you! Oh, clear!
One and three in general public comments, please.
Two minutes for the items, one minute for general, please, go ahead.
Cool, I actually went to leave that, uh, take care of the lean a little while ago. Uh, shit, it was a fucking hour and a half ago, about a stupid fucking presentation. Um, and she was coming at me aggressively, the mean lady, because she didn't like the way I was squalling to, uh, the escalation of an officer that's escalated with legal board. This is the lady that handles the lean. And she was getting involved in a situation that she didn't really know was going on. So that's the person that's organizing the lean? And maybe she was the person doing that, I don't know, she seemed a little, I don't know, but she seemed a little bitter and quick to jump to go and start that one fast. So maybe coming comforting on her, maybe they need a lean, I need to make it, or anything like that. Maybe she just got her help in somebody's business, because she didn't really know all the fucking shit that was in the sauce, if she wanted to go with the sauce. Didn't know what was going on. Um, item number three is about certification of elections. I want to congratulate Heather Hutt, because she proved herself, she won, uh, pretty, uh, she won pretty handily, so don't actually talk shit on her power base. She did also like talking more than for like one year. Uh, it was pretty, she was already discussing with y'all, the rest of y'all. I, I would go out there, say anything about that lady, because she's been pretty nice. Then you got, uh, you got, you missed me, her side out along with Jesus straight, and then you got, and then you got, uh, Parrot Dawson, who already bombed in 113, when he gave away the public lands to Mary Almozo. So, you know, you missed me looking pretty nice, uh, I don't know, maybe she's got money now, just got banged, and her name's a long time out, but it's really interesting to be honest, she laughed like she was screwed, but people don't even think it's cute no more. These people are just, they're a joke, you know? Heather Hutt, one, because she's really sweet, maybe she'll do a really good job, helps does, and by removing the district, I'll support her. Um, but the rest of y'all are a fucking disgusting, and it's really a shame how y'all hate each other. And you laugh like it's a joke, but it's not, general, go ahead. Um, Sean Murphy wanted to let y'all know, he hated Mark Corrigan, and he told people already, fucked himself, and he didn't carry a good shot, that was Sean Murphy, that was my words. Um, I totally warned y'all about the people, but what are the people, you didn't listen, and now insurance, uh, subjected, I killed, and everybody turned off. Um, corruption is on the menu, and everybody was looking at served. Um, this rock represents the rock that David has taken alliance with, to show that no giant is too big for anybody that has a mandate within them. And this pit represents Yahya Sinwar's day, what he threw as the anxiety occupation that Kevin's not a mean guy.
Kevin came back.
Mr. Herman, please do not disrupt this meeting.
Sorry, pumpkins.
Good afternoon, could please provide for the names, like the under, if I would like to speak to you?
Sebastian Hernandez, General Public. I'm with Morgan, out of East July, working City 5, City 11. The destruction we saw earlier was love. It came from love of our people on the street that are powerless, harassed, and pushed around by this county's devious 4118 policy. It came from love, and just like Corrigan was concerned about his family's sin, we're concerned about our friends and family's daily structural brutality every day. The random operation studies explicitly show 4118 only displaces people and exacerbates the inhumane situation forty times, because there really is no place to go, and the rent is too damn high. Even our personal responsibility issues, we know structural issues, issues that this council intends, a temporary cleanup in one neighborhood becomes a new campus in another, and how the neighborhood residents want to please are waking up to that fact. We see that the C11 were refugees from the Venice sweeps and Under the 405, she sheltered nearby in the creek. We can turn this around, start real housing offers of dignity and stability, but no big promises. Councilmember Blumenfeld, the destruction we saw is not nostalgia, it is future, and here in the streets until the war in the border stops. Repeat 4118.
Yeah.
So being told there are no other speakers in the room in person, so if I have to, would you like to do a virtual public comment?
Yes, we'll go to the public.
Get all the council members to pay attention.
Call user one, unmute yourself.
Call user one, believe you're a good.
So, this is kind of a rare moment, right? So. I've been hearing things about the phone systems, but you got Yvonne Wheeler, the president of the LA Fed here, and then Kevin DeLeone, who claims he's a victim of the LA Fed tapes. In fact, he got recorded saying extremely racist things, and there's a really open question about who leaked those recordings. But this is where we're at. Um, enjoy these last few minutes, Kevin DeLeone, because chances of getting re-elected, so this chamber are like a snowball's chance in hell. This is Richard Serrano, who lives in Council District 6, which is Amelda Padilla's district. Of course, Amelda replaced Nuri Martinez, who along with Kevin DeLeone is illegally recorded at the LA County Federation of Labor, right, which is where the LA Fed is, right? That's, um, we've been out there, and that's Yvonne Wheeler, the president of the LA Fed. You got Yvonne Wheeler, the president of the LA Fed, Kevin DeLeone, who got recorded, and then Nuri Martinez, his successor and protege, frankly, Amelda Padilla. But this is your LA City Council. And you see, nobody is here still. Saunders, the LA Times, is back there, he's talking with the police.
During electoral time, we did only allow the people to be able to come and contribute to the people that are running for office. All this money's all about, is LSPD, our department, again, paid the way. They get elected, and we get to win.
You can trust me, you will now, I agree, please, first item, number one, I should speak more than you want.
Okay, General Public comments.
Go ahead.
If you're going back to the same thing you just said, we got rid of a sheriff, and Mayor got appointed him LSPD Chief of Police. We got rid of Kevin DeLeone.
Bye, Kevin!
Because we got rid of Mayor B, and we're not finding anything out. We really don't have a David, please. It just bothers me, that you got the rest of public people, it gives you the right to praise, we thank you, when you guys are all, uh, you have to leave, and I follow your duty.
Call area 9519, Mr. Bell.
Yes, my name is Jason, and I'm the president here. And my name is, so let's get up now, figure out this it, I paid to sign out, a little young duo, one two nine.
Yep, Figaro Street is not on the agenda, folks. I don't figure out which is in jurisdiction.
I just want to say that, um, you know, since it's been a evening today, I had a visit there, you know, um, tonight, you two will sing to your Michael. You will give your wife a girl's name, because this, the only person you guys are going to get.
So, again, so I forgot exactly what LA Fetch Purpose is here, but the LA County Federation of Labor, President Yvonne Wheeler is here, so is Kevin DeLeone for his last day. Amelda Padilla, Nuri Martinez, his successor, Hugo Sarmartinez, Katie Arslavski. Blumenfeld is nowhere to be seen, DeLeone is Monica Rodriguez. Krikorian Hernandez, apparently he's really polite. John Lee is chatting with her, and Tim Akosker's just chilling, talking with his staffer. Oh, did Kevin run away? No, he's, he's at his, uh, that sign comes down after today. Isabel Harado had defeated Kevin DeLeone, came in first place in the primary, and then whooped his butt by like, I think nearly 10 points. So, DeLeone is done, Harado up, and then Krikorian's getting replaced too by Adrian Nazarian. Here's Tracy Park. We're voting on building in safety at a location in west, like South LA? And then three is certification of the election, so. Bye! $950,000, in fact, going to his staff members on the way out of the office. Taxpayer money. He has the largest coms team on the council. Losing her job. I don't think this is even true. His sister concludes Skid Row.
Two summer opens, Nancy Torres, Manu, it's Camila, Jason, like, etc.
So this is it, he's done.
Um, Madam President, I also wanted to, you are very powerful, especially, uh, thank you recognition to all of the council sergeants that we have here for the lovely duty that attacked us recently. Special recognition to CLA, to head up my show, so thank you very much, but we'll be very close with our team to perpetuate what I believe will be some of our very policy. I need this to be able to not say, well, we're not here at campus home, but to him and to be able to watch this at home, I want to thank them very much. To the city club and the city for the top, thank you so very much. All the important policies and memos and motion that we move forward, channel 35, I want to give a very special thank you to, thanks to all of my fellow council members here. To them as well, individual staff members as well, not just the principals on this portion, but the staff members here as well, who have poured their own, sort of manner, uh, speaking by my book, closely with my staff members, to all of us. I want to thank you very much. I want to wish you very best to all of you, my colleagues here. I want to wish you very best to our new council president, our police Harris Scottson, as you must show in, uh, a new, uh, uh, group of individuals who will be coming here to my home, to be about the bottom. I want to wish your everything very best to the bottom. I'm just a phone call or text away, but if it may be, if it may be, if I, or if they be over, we are over, they please feel free to give me all our consent and text. I want to thank, again, all the city hall family for their incredible, working closely, all the department heads, all the department heads, and quite incredible. So they have all the department heads and they work with us very, very closely, but I want to thank all of the incredible department heads in the city of LA. I know as we enter a new year, it is a big time, given the strong deficits we have here, and the construction that we have here in Sacramento, and just a new regime launched. But I trust, I like to think all of you folks, the staff behind this, will be able to steer us in the right direction, just all your waters are coming towards me, but I want to thank all of you from the bottom of my heart. Last thing I want to say is that 4214, uh, we will be an unprecedented amount of dollars, approximately four hundred and forty-five million dollars. This is about for, um, either a city hall or local city council, this will be two projects, forty-seven point five million dollars for Skid Row. Thirty-seven point seven million dollars for White's. Thirty-three million dollars for Holmbeck Park. Thirty-four million dollars for Valley Boulevard. Forty-one million dollars for downtown Quidditch Center, thirty million dollars for the little Tokyo service center for Portland housing project. That is just a small example, one hundred and sixty-four million dollars from the Seven Ten Mobility Store. Every single dollar that I just mentioned outside of the elected budgets, this is about part of the elected budget, a lot of part of the general budget. The city of LA, but these are dollars that I use, um, my discretion dollars to hire experts outside consultants and sort of put the package together, and we actually apply for the money. Uh, it's rather unusual, it's rather unorthodox, without a doubt, uh, but we competed with City San Jose, and City San Diego, and City of San Rafael, and City Sacramento. Even the city of LA, when they reviewed the application, we applied to the city council's volunteer team, and we were able to score four hundred and forty-five million dollars. Be mindful only that this money is unfundable, which means it can be utilized for issues that not germinate to projects. Uh, and also to, uh, they're not the coal people, no, you can't coal them, right? They had other issues that are not germane to the, uh, to the project and stuff. But just hoping that that amount of money, I don't think we can carry leadership or carry forward and make sure that we perpetuate positive change that will come to city 4214 as well as the entire cities of Los Angeles. From the bottom of my heart, Council President, Police Harris Scottson, Madam President, I'm definitely a small, my, Kathy, who will follow up. Cynthia Rahm, Mr. Kirk Ryan, Tracy Park.
Oh, look at Emelda, she looks just uncomfortable with him. That's what Ida La said, was that she just seems very comfortable with him, so he must be pressing her for something. So nobody's gonna miss this guy. He's trying so hard, none of them look excited. Marquis doesn't look excited, only Monica, like she's smirking, like Rodriguez is smirking. He is out of here.
Thank you so much, uh, Madam President. I would like to thank councilmember DeLeone for his service, uh, you know, uh, as you stand here today, you know, you and I, and council and the public have been through one of the toughest set of political relationships
What's that?
professional relationships that we've ever had, and you stand here today standing tall, uh, having gone through it and, and run through the labor, uh, and, uh, in many cases recovered and continue to, to work on. We had almost three hundred people in the middle of time that they didn't have a meeting, and it was a commitment that you were on that was struggling that they, uh, made for us. And I, and you said, my doctor's appointment will be over in ten minutes, I'll be there, and you showed up, and you did not have to do that at all. You could have said, you know what, I'm taking my mark, I'm going home, I'm going to beach, uh, to, to enjoy the last few days, and so I appreciate you for that, and the care with which you handled the city despite all the, uh, controversies that has surrounded the time that you've been here. But that on behalf of this council, uh, thank you very much, Councilman DeLeone.
You know, I don't have much to say, but I do want to kind of put it out there, you know, like, there's a lot of moments where this feels like it's a thankless job. Give me some hours in order for you to add the
Salary of two hundred twenty thousand dollars.
But, you know, I, I know that, as mentioned, there's a lot of No one said the I don't hear that it is about the constituents replacing here in the first place. So, um, for everyone that wonders, is critical, you know, to, are you supporting Kevin DeLeone, are you, you know, on his side, or when not? At the end of the day, we're colleagues and we're here to support things that happen in our district. So for myself, it was always important for me to know that when and if I partnered with you, it was because I knew that what you were doing was to support your district. So thank you for what you've done to your district, and I wish you the best, and congratulations on the work that you're gonna accomplish, not just here, but even before.
Okay, um, so, um, would you please, for, generally, the
Was that about his constituents? He tried to transfer two and a half million dollars.
You've already run a warning, sir, stop disrupting this meeting. Rob Kwan, your excuse for the meeting.
Two point four million dollars.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam President. I should have got somebody to test the status of this, uh, we gave to the council, uh, we worked on the big project, I had an eye for, for the people apart, and if they're done, and I think it sort of reflects that. Of course, the situation that was unfortunate occurred on tape, and I know you're making real strides to total, and you know, the process is still ongoing, but I should appreciate your willingness to give, to share, to share, and to tell, and to know that your service Thanks for your service.
Thanks for bringing up the tears.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Shania, I just want to thank you, um, we know this job is a tight, tight place, so we have to make, uh, and I'm appreciative to anybody who's been close or happy knowing that. And you've done that for so many years because you are a person who has a really character to the community, and something that I have heard you saying here and working with you here in the city council, you know, you and I may not always agree on every subject, but I know that you have a sincere concern for the people that live, these people that you represent. I think it says a lot about a person when their staff sits with them through good times and bad times, that that type of loyalty is not something that bothers or leaves, it's something that burns, and, uh, that, that shimmers a lot about your character. And, uh, I just want to say thank you for your service, your friendship, and I will commit for that small, uh, your small, uh, slice of the city of Los Angeles, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Lee, Mr. Park.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to lay that out, Mr. DeLeone, um, I hate to buy, so I refuse to conclude this one, just to so long for now, my all being around, um, I wanted to just know the incredible forward progress that you made in your time in this position here in the city of Los Angeles. Your constituents in council district 14 are better off through your service. The incredible work that you did with your ARCs, your meals program, the homeless, the rapid expansion of housing has been nothing short of remarkable. But it isn't just your years here in this council, thank you have been a true public servant your entire adult life, and so I really just want to thank you and commend you for the leadership that you've demonstrated, the grace under very difficult, trying times. And on behalf of C11, my friend and reliable supporter, as even on things that you and I didn't agree on, I have appreciated your support of my leadership, the depth of my judgment, bringing forth the policies and the agenda that I need to advance on behalf of my constituents. And I really appreciate that, and I know that you've done that for others in this one as well. I'm gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss you, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you, Mr. Park. And Mr. DeLeone, I, I think, uh, I know you have a lot of professional relationships with a number of individuals from the state legislature that certainly perceive us working directly with one another. But by reputation, you are among those that I feel are involved, because of your advocacy, fighting for the most vulnerable individuals that were not recognized at a time that it wasn't in vote, when that wasn't in law, when you were working at what stopped immigration, when you were organizing during 187, when some people weren't even born yet. That was, that is a legacy that you continue to carry, is that you, by example, by your life's example, have been that stalwart individual that has fought for workers' rights, that has fought for immigrant rights, and
Has fought for himself.
May all of us have the guts to stand strong and remain strong after the worst moments of our life.
What?
That's all we can do is make our time stand up, and maybe more of the moments that any one of us could ever wish to have. And so thank you for your district, thank you for fighting for our communities, thank you for being a partner for so many of us, and, uh, I thank you for your incredible years of public service, because you have the resources you need from the state legislature to here in the whole government. So thank you for your service. And, um, now, I wonder, any other announcements?
Madam President, of record, council has been reached, proposing on
They are opposed to the report. Stanford adjournments?
No, no thanks.
Oh, you don't announce it? Okay, Mr. Park.
Thank you very much. Uh, colleagues, tonight we're kicking off in the one and five, our second annual Winter Wonderland, uh, we'll be in Wilmington in just a few hours at the Wilmington Town Square, and tomorrow evening we'll be on the waterfront at the Port of L.A. Town Square for day four. Like last year, we're hosting Winter Wonderland throughout the district, it'll be fun with the entire family, snow fun, Santa, tree lighting, sledding. Uh, the holidays are a time for connection, I'm thrilled to be with our community as we come together. So friends out there in TV land, mark your calendars for Winter Wonderland, it's coming near you next Friday, we'll be at the Watts Civic Center, Wednesday after that, then we'll go to National Park in Harbor City, and including in the gateway at Normandy's Drug Center, so come on out, fun forever, thank you.
Thank you, ready to go, announcements? Saying none, adjournments, Mr. Jaroslawski.
Much, uh, Madam President. Uh, I'd like to adjourn to this meeting in memory of Adrian Noamaskin, a remarkable, we know dedicated for life protecting the power of mothers, particularly older
Alright.
I'm joined today by her, by her husband Arthur, her daughter Melissa, and Melissa's husband Sean. Thank you for being here. Most of us know you from her groundbreaking work as the founder of the Stop Senior Scams Act program. I created a year to your initiative she launched in 2009, educating seniors and
What's going on outside?
Older adults. Her work been really founded in that, in national recognition from the U.S. Senate, especially the committee on aging in 2008, and it became a law for power over the populations.
He's done. And where Kevin DeLeone?
All done.
All done, I don't think he's gonna come back out. Hugo and Eunice and Heather Hutt didn't say goodbye. I don't, like, uh, you only got some goodbyes, you know, because you know the, you know, all do their talking thing?
Yeah.
So he got goodbyes from Marquis, Blumenfeld wasn't here, Eunice didn't speak, Krikorian wasn't here, Nithia isn't here, Jaroslawski did not speak, Emelda spoke, Monica spoke, Kern spoke, Heather Hutt did not speak, Tracy Park spoke, John Lee spoke, Hugo did not, and McCosker did not either, could have been fair enough. So adios Kevin DeLeone, um, the most hated man easily at City Hall, and unless he slips back in there for one last look, that was it, they said goodbye. So changes, 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 I don't know if we can catch him moving out, I do hear it's moving out of his office.
Oh, okay.
Because Harado's gotta move in, right? She's gonna start, I believe, next week at the Square Inn.
Yeah, well, it ends midnight tonight.
Yeah.
So.
I don't know, because Bass had to sign off on his golden parachute, I don't know if she was gonna do it.
Well, yeah, yeah, she could veto it.
Yeah, she could veto it, I, I think, I think she should veto the golden parachute for Kevin DeLeone.
It's only two point four million, and they amended it to nine hundred fifty-five.
Correct.
But also, the new councilwoman could come in next week and ask to reverse it.
Yeah.
Uh, this happened with David Root, when he won and Tom LaBonde retired, Tom LaBonde had four hundred fifty thousand dollars in gifts that he gave out in motions. First day that David Root came in, he, he, he had a muscle in fucking back and cancelled all of it. And so, uh, the new council person, because it's less than ten days, see Kevin had to get this shit done in the ten days.
Yeah.
So that, so he should have done that two weeks ago, seven, seven four foot of America.
His lawsuit's low.
He didn't do that, it's too close to
Yeah, so.
So probably Kevin was thinking, hey, I'm out of here. I'm probably gonna go to fucking prison in a couple of years, like fucking Louise or whatever, I guess he's
He's got his LA Fed tapes lawsuit, which he's being accused of fraud for engaging in, and then he's got California Fair Political Practices Commission, so.
Yeah, and so, uh, you know what he figures? I gotta do something to let these people think they're gonna fuck about, right?
Yeah.
All these staffers, if he won this, they're fucking lost, so he's like, output this motion for all this whole retirement policy, makes it all happen. So he kind of goes by, and come back and say, okay, let it, let it go. But he thinks, and now we're all happy. That way, you walk away, while the new councilwoman comes and fucks him up all night. He just said, hey, oh, let me talk, let me, let me, let me talk, let me talk, let me see what I can do, and he's sitting right on there, fucking people on show. Yeah, because he doesn't have any use for that. Yeah, because he doesn't have any use for that.
We're done, they're locking the doors. That's your LA shitty council. And we're gonna run out of battery, thank you Wayne, fuck you Kevin DeLeón, seriously, and we're just glad that some of these people did not decide to kiss his ass on the way out of the office.
They, you know, they're gonna go in, he saw one of the speakers, Rob Quan, he got thrown out.
Yeah, got thrown out.
Makes this backhand a cut in the pocket.
Oh, I think, I think, I think he's just being a smarty pants, but, but this is why I talk to everybody, I, you know, I'm an equal opportunity learner. Yeah, and you're still here, and...
Well, I'm not gonna be here, but I am, so you see, men today are not raised by fathers.
No.
A man is raised by...
And Kevin was not raised by his father either. Correct.
And so...
And he changed his name, actually.
Is don't talk about mother name, or you're not gonna talk the road.
No, no, no. Alright, that's it, you can see, here's the stragglers. That's the meeting. Goodbye Kevin DeLeón. We're gonna have to go ahead and cut it, I am about to run out of power, everybody, please support independent journalism in Los Angeles, Substack to follow, make sure you're signed up for that, and this is your LA City Council.